Welcome to Candidate Conversations. I'm Jonathan Brunt. I'm the government editor of the Spokesman Review and we're here for Northwest Passages and the Spokesman Review. And we are here to talk to Zach Sapon, incumbent for the Northwest City Council District, and his challenger, Christopher Savage. Thank you very much. And thank you very much for coming. Unfortunately, the person who would normally do this is Emory Dinman, who is the City Hall reporter, but he's sick, so I'm pitch hitting. So do the best I can. We are trying to focus on one issue and go in deep with that. It can be a little give and take. I'll try to, you know, keep things civil as possible. But we're going to talk about homelessness issues today. I know you've had a chance to talk about all sorts of things at all sorts of other debates, so thank you very much for joining us. And so we had a big piece of news this week with the passage of new stricter enforcement for homelessness issues. And we know that you voted for it, so I think we'll start with Christopher today. How would have you voted on that?
All right. Well, thank you all for being here. I appreciate seeing so many familiar faces. So how I would have voted on what was voted into City Hall this week would be, yes, I would have voted for it as well. But the bigger question that I ask is, why wasn't this done three months ago? We had three months ago that this could have been put into an ordinance and they decided not to. We had zero citations and zero acceptance for the outreach team that was provided for that. That is my biggest question, was why are we doing this a week before the election? It seems kind of a little bit like they're trying to do a lot to try to sway a little bit of votes, and to me, it seems like it's a little too little, too late on what we're supposed to be doing. We should have been doing this not only three months ago, but several years ago. So by trying to get to this point just now, it just doesn't seem right. But I would have voted for it because that's what the citizens are asking for. When I'm on the doors, they want public safety in our city. They want to make sure that the homeless is being addressed in the right kind of manner, and this would have done a lot more if it would have been done a lot sooner rather than later.
Cassie's asked you a question, so I will...
Yeah, I would have loved to have this passed sooner. The reality is, is that we have to work at the speed of bipartisanship. And so in this case, this was a bipartisan, voted-approved across the political spectrum, and this was the speed that conservatives on the council wanted to go. And so I led this effort and worked with council member Michael Cathcart, council member Kitty Kletzky, and we were meeting, almost talking daily to get this passed. It's just very interesting that Chris now says that he would have supported this because his entire campaign, he's been campaigning on reinstating Proposition 1. And this whole campaign, I've been saying, we need to do something citywide. And that is what voters have said. So a year ago, I led bipartisan roundtable discussions with over 100 to 150 people at the Central Library downtown. You know, people across the political spectrum, from philanthropy to business to individual residents impacted by homelessness. And we heard the concerns and we looked at the laws and the existing laws. And Proposition 1 was passed by voters in 2023, and the city council could not change those laws in 2023. Well, I was gonna say why it had to come to now.
But I think I heard you say conservatives on city council didn't want to move faster.
This was...
Are you sure about that? If that came back and if it were June, you're saying...
Oh, what we voted on is the same things I've been advocating for for a year.
But you're saying Michael Cathcart and Jonathan Bingle would not have voted on what happened earlier this week if it came before him in June?
I'm saying, we could have passed something when we found out that the police were unable to enforce something, right? There was not, what we passed was not the proposal that was offered from anybody back in June. What I was pushing for in June was what was just passed. So this is the same thing that came out of the roundtable discussions in 20, or last fall, from August until December, and it was broadly, get people treatment first, then do enforcement, and give the discretion to police officers to do that. And that's a thing that I've been advocating for and pushing for since then. We were unable to do that until the state Supreme Court threw out Proposition 1 in March. And at that time is when we started working on a new path forward.
You couldn't, you could have.
I voted to reinstate Proposition 1.
Right, but you didn't need the Supreme Court to make their decision to do that, did you?
So the laws that you could not change Proposition 1, we could not have banned camping citywide until the Supreme Court...
Oh, okay, you're talking about the US Supreme Court?
No, 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 no.
Not the state Supreme Court.
The state Supreme Court. Until Proposition 1 was thrown out by the state Supreme Court, we could not touch that law for three years. So we could not, the law that we just passed was unable to be passed until the state Supreme Court threw that out. And as soon as they did, like, we looked at bringing back Proposition 1. I voted to reinstate Proposition 1 at that time, because that's what voters wanted. And then that failed. And it failed by the majority of the council members, not me. I was in the minority. And then I advocated for a solution. Instead of just dwelling on the past, I advocated for a solution. And I hear loud and clear from folks, they wanted something citywide. That's what we heard from the roundtable discussions. They wanted something that gives officers discretion, and they wanted something that connects people to services for. And that's what I've been pushing for, for over a year. And I'm proud that we were able to get there in a bipartisan process and accomplish that goal, because that's what we want. And a council member who listens to folks knows the system and accomplishes and gets results.
Do you see a benefit in being at a place where it was a 7-0 vote?
Yes, because then it shows that a lot of people are being listened to finally, which they have been asking for a long time. I mean, when it happened on the June 16th vote, where they did the ad hoc kind of midnight vote that they kind of switched it to, then it shows that they're actually not listening to the voters. People have come down to City Hall for several months, asking for these changes for several months. They had BOMA, they had DSP, they had several citizens that came down and said, we need this sooner rather than later. So this could have been done immediately if they wanted to. The state Supreme Court, yes, voted down because they said the process was wrong. What the city council could have done is they could have adopted it on day one, and they know that. And that's why I kind of push back on saying that it was taking a long process, because as you can see, there's been a lot of 5-2 votes. That doesn't sound bipartisan to me.
What, I wanted to switch to another issue, a big issue in the city, and that is, Mayor Brown has proposed or has moved forward with a scattered site shelter. More shelters, but smaller in more different parts of the city, as opposed to a big shelter like what was the Trent Avenue Shelter. Do you support Mayor Brown's effort on that?
Yeah, absolutely. Really quick, I want to point out that DSP supported this legislation. And DSP, I don't know if you've talked to them, but I talked to them regularly as we were bringing this up, and they said, please don't pass this until we have seen it, we've reviewed it, and we have the time to vote on it. So I advocated for these changes on October 6th, or whatever, the first Monday of Public Safety Committee meeting. I said, we need to make these changes immediately. There's an emergency in downtown. And the stakeholders of downtown, downtown Spokane Partnership, said, please wait until we have the right ordinance in the right time to make sure that it works. And that's what I did. I met with them and talked to them and reviewed it with them. And in the end, they supported it. So did Spokane Business Association and other folks, because we worked in a bipartisan process to do that.
Scattered sites.
Scattered site shelters. Absolutely do support that. When I was in office, when I started, we, the city under former Mayor Nadine Woodward, was focused on large congregate shelters. And that was the track shelter. And it didn't work. And we knew it didn't work. We passed a resolution saying, please don't create these shelters. They don't work. If you look at the research across the country, large-scale shelters, over 200, 300, 500 people don't work. They don't move people to and through services. And that's exactly what we did at the city of Spokane. Mayor Woodward did not offer us any other solution towards that. We passed a resolution saying, please do something that's more around 30 people, maximum 50 people. And so now we have Mayor Wood, or Mayor Brown, who's been putting forward that scattered site shelter model. I have been very supportive of it. It's working. The impact is much smaller in our neighborhoods. I've put forward and advocated for legislation that has been passed, that creates protections for neighbors with those scattered sites in their neighborhood, scattered shelter sites in their neighborhood. And so that's the type of thing that we need, is these types of shelters, because it gets a manageable size, direct services to people, and they're able to get permanent housing after shelter.
What do you think of scattered site shelters as opposed to, like, the track shelter?
Well, I don't think they're working. There's a lot of people that are having problems with these scattered sites models. I've talked to people that are exactly across from these shelters, and they are not containing themselves, whether it comes to litter or it comes to their personnel that are coming there. There are several people that have come to me, their families, and saying that these children are being exposed to these kind of problems because they're having closeness in their neighborhoods. Like, just over at St. Charles, I've talked to several people over in that school and that parish, and they're saying that there is more instances of these kids seeing that things that they should not be. People smoking fentanyl, people exposing themselves to them, and that is not good for our children. So I believe that we really need more of a better shelter model than what's going on right now. And it doesn't make sense to me how we're helping out our homeless when we have 400 less beds than we did previously when we didn't have the scattered sites model. If we really want to help these people, then we need to make sure that they have a space, they have a bed, and they have a ability to make sure that they are getting out of homelessness. And that means to have a better scattered, a better model than the scattered sites one right now.
Would you consider going back to something like the Trent Shelter then?
Yes, absolutely. Because...
Well, so you want more beds. How would you pay for them?
Well, we could look into a lot of our funding that's coming into. It's going to be very difficult, because honestly, we are in a $13 million deficit here at the city. So we need to be very creative on how we do these processes. So for one of my things to help out with that, is I've identified over 20 positions that are redundant within the City Hall that we can remove, like our climate's resilience coordinator, our transportation and sustainability director, and several other positions that we can at least have $2 to $3 million worth of saving, that we can find funding to help out with trying to find funding for these kind of shelters that need this kind of stuff.
Zach, do you feel there are enough shelter beds now? And if not, how would you pay for them?
There's absolutely not. I'm just wondering, though, was that the same person or two different people that you just named?
Which position?
The Director of Sustainability and the Director of Transportation.
It's one.
It's one person. Just clarifying, because last debate, you said it was two different people.
Yes, and I've actually put something out on my social media that addresses that perfectly.
All right, yep. So just wanted to clarify that that's one position that you just named. And the mayor has already announced over 30 to 50 positions that are being cut. And that's just to balance the budget. That's not investing in any additional resources in the city. And we, when I voted for this legislation, when I voted for it back in June, what I've been talking about for over years, that we need more places for people to go. And so we now have a policy in place that says that nowhere in the city of Spokane is illegal to camp on the street. The problem is, where are people going to go? My opponent has said, people should go to jail. Jail works for some people, but it's not the solution for most. I think we should do treatment beds, sobering beds, detox centers, stabilization. We need to give people the right treatment first. And then jail's going to be an option for people who refuse services, and we need to connect them to those in jail. Because when they're in jail, without treatment, without services, they're going to end up back on the street and in the same exact position that they're at. So that's why I'm supportive of the bipartisan, safe and healthy task force that is created with philanthropy and business and Republicans and Democrats across the whole county, to look at the funding that's necessary to create the facilities for people to go. My opponent thinks that cutting 20 positions that we're already cutting at the city of Spokane is going to lead to more shelter beds. That's not the reality of the situation. Those 20 cuts that are already happening is just going to balance the budget for next year.
They're cutting the sustainability director?
No, not that. That's his proposal. But there are already 20 positions.
So they're not cutting that position?
That, it's not finalized. The mayor has made her announcement of things. But I think it's incredibly important to address safe streets, and that is why there's a Director of Transportation and Sustainability, because it's important to have our streets safer. But that was not a real solution. My opponent says talking points, but he doesn't know what the actual budget is and has changed it, and keeps saying, like, you just kept those positions, and that doesn't actually bring funding to homelessness. We need new revenue options to actually meet the need of our community.
Well, I'm glad the mayor is actually following my kind of policy issues, because I've been talking about this far longer than when they actually kind of proposed it, so...
He's characterized you as preferring to put people in jail. Is that true? Would you, how would you characterize your position about, you know, approaching someone who's camping on the street?
Well, we also need stabilization facility centers. We need more sobering beds, and we need a correctional facility that has wraparound services. That's what he's not adding into it, is I advocate for a correctional facility that have wraparound services, a mental health, addiction, and while it's onsite job training. This is how we can help these people out. And there are several addicts that I've actually talked to that have said that when they went to jail, that was the catalyst that made them think, I need to change my life. There are several pastors that I've talked to that are now talking to their parishes that have done the same thing, where they were in jail, they were addicts, and this is what the turning point was. We need to make sure that we are giving them the right opportunities to help change their lives, because it is not compassionate to have them die on the streets. I don't want these people out of sight and out of mind or dead. I want them back into their families, in society, and back into helping us out so that we aren't making sure that they're dead on the street. That is my top concern. It breaks my heart when I see so many people out on the street and they are not getting the right resources. We need to do this in the right manner, and we can. We have several funding arms, like our opiate settlement dollars, that if we work with our county and other regional partners, we can make sure that we actually have facilities. Like, for instance, we don't have a youth facility for people under the age of 15, for when they're getting addicted to drugs and opioids and fentanyl. We have no facility east of the Cascades. That blows my mind. We need to make sure that we have a facility like that, so we can go upstream from the problem and make sure that we are actively addressing this so that we don't have several generations that are adversely affected by this. That's why I'm so glad that we have Matty's Place and Vanessa Behan that helps us out with that. But they need more resources and they need more help.
You brought up the jail, and I think this is a semi-related issue now that we have this new stricter ordinance that could lead to people being put in jail. Do you support building a new jail? And if so, how would you want the community to pay for it?
Yes, because we actually need a new correctional facility. I've talked to several of the people that work there, as well as some of the people that are actually getting in and out of there. And we need a new, updated, modern correctional facility, because it is very in need of repair. It is causing some safety issues. It's causing a lot of problems that is not contributing to a well-run facility. So that's why we need to do it. It's going to be a very hard ask from the citizens, because they are already being taxed way too much. So that's why I do understand about that, but it is very vital. The longer we wait, the more it's going to cost us money. Just within the two to three years that it was being proposed, it went from $300 million proposal to a $600 million proposal. That's why we need to do this sooner rather than later. And I know there's some people that are uncomfortable with that, but it's going to be a very important aspect of how we address this in the right manner, because it will be with wraparound services that are going to have those kind of programs and services that will help these people out of their addiction and back into society, because that's what we need to do. We need to make sure that they are coming back into their families, that these are their brothers, mothers, sisters, fathers, everyone in their family, friends. We need to make sure that we are helping these people in the right way. And that's...
Sorry.
Oh, no, go ahead.
Would you say sales tax, property tax? What's your preferred way of paying for it?
It'd probably be a property tax.
Property tax, okay.
Because we already have a lot of sales tax on us right now.
All right.
Yeah, again, I couldn't, I'm really glad you're supporting all the policies that I've been working on for the last four years, and the efforts that we're doing to work on improving a correctional facility. That's why we, I voted and passed a resolution supporting the creation of the Safe and Healthy Task Force, that is looking on how do we implement the improvements to the jail and creating the beds to do that. So I'm really glad that you're supportive of those policies. And the task force is looking at what are the number of beds we need. The measure failed two years ago. Was it two years ago? But voters rejected it 40 to 60% of a new jail. And that was because it was a blank check with no plan. And so this is creating a plan that we can go to voters and say, here's the actual need that we have, the capacity that we need, the different resources and the different types of beds that we need, and go to voters with a plan. And they deserve a plan. I opposed the last measure and it failed, because I listened to constituents and understand what they need. And they wanted a plan. And so this is going to come up with a plan. The law, the talk about it is largely going to be a sales tax measure. That's what the county put forward last time as a sales tax measure. And so that is not a city council decision that makes that choice. That is a county decision. The county is run by, or the jail is run by the county, and the county commissioners decide how to do all that. We can advocate for it, but it's ultimately their choice. And that is where the discussion has been. Knew that someone would want to do it as a property tax, because that's not really where the conversation's been. And across the board, across the bipartisan spectrum, no one's really talking about it that way.
So you could see supporting a sales tax measure for a new jail?
Yep, putting it forward to voters with a, yep, absolutely.
Okay, yeah. All right. Another big housing issue here that's been, kind of this main policy of the city and a lot of places around the country, is housing first. First, get people housed, then deal with the side issues like drug addiction and so forth. I think I started the jail with you, so I was, do you support housing first as a general policy in homelessness, and why?
Yeah, I think, again, I look at research and best practices, and that's what's important, is looking at what best gets people off the street. And there's, it's depending on every scenario for every individual, but we need to get people off the street and into a safe place to live. And so that's a shelter, a house, somewhere for them to be so that they can access treatment and access resources, and get job training programs, get connected to an employer. And for some folks, it's as simple as getting a driver's license. They don't have an identification card. So it's about getting people a safe place to be, connected to resources and treatment from there. Again, it's going to be a case-by-case scenario, and I've been fully supportive of creating bio name lists so that we can track individuals and determine what their needs are. The policy that I just approved in law requires law enforcement to track their interactions with every individual so that we're able to figure out what are their problems, that they're not engaging with services. And unfortunately, that's not going to work for everyone. And so, listening to constituents, listening to people from the roundtable discussions that I led, we created a policy that has an escalation of consequences. So if people are refusing to engage with services, then law enforcement can help push them to those services. And if they refuse, then they can get a citation and go to court where they say, you need to go to a shelter, you need to get engaged with services. And so I believe in this intent of offering services first and having gradual consequences if they're not engaged.
Housing first?
I don't think it's the right model for what we need to do right now. We actually need to have a first step of getting these people to a stabilization facility center, because a lot of these people are addicted on the streets. There's a small portion that are just down on their luck and because the housing isn't there. But we need to have a first process of having these people get addressed with what their problem is. There are too many people in transitional housing right now, especially at Catholic charities, that passed away because they allow drug use in their facilities and their buildings. And that's not good. We have several children that have no parents now, because we allow that to happen. We need to make sure that we are keeping these families together and addressing this in the right manner, because this is a big issue. We need to make sure that we are having the right steps for getting these people back in society. And with this transitional housing with wet houses, like what's going on with Catholic charities allowing drug use in their facilities...
I don't think, they don't allow it in their facilities.
No, they don't.
Right. I mean, I, you were saying that they can maybe be high at the time, but they're not allowing them, permitting it to happen in their facilities. Are you saying otherwise?
Well, with the deaths that have been happening and their housing, I would kind of push back against that.
Okay, all right. And I interrupted you, so if you want to continue.
So yes, I don't think that housing first is the good option. We need to make sure that we have the stabilization facility centers and these programs that will help them out of addiction first, as well as programs that follow up with this transitional housing of how to take care of a domicile and/or home anymore. Because with these people being out on the streets for so long, they've lost the ability and the habits of trying to make sure that they're cleaning up after themselves and making sure that there is a housing, or a housing place for them that is clean and vibrant for them.
I wanted to ask you, I think it was at a previous event where the idea of the National Guard came up. What is your position about whether you would or would not support National Guard coming to Spokane?
Well, the big thing about that is, is that when I'm on the doors right now, people are not concerned about that. That is a national issue that is not bleeding into our local issues right now. People are more focused on the public safety that is in Spokane right now, that is falling drastically, the homeless that are being scattered across our neighborhoods, and the affordability that is affecting our next generation where they're moving out of Spokane. And it's not causing good, because if we don't have people here in the future, we're going to have a brain drain here in Spokane, and it's just going to be a shadow of its former self for our city. So that's what the people are looking for, is that they're not looking at these national issues that aren't actually affecting us in that kind of way. And I'd actually like to push back and remind people that when there was a state of emergency that was issued on June 11th, it was a 7-0 vote that the city council voted to approve. That means that my opponent approved of Mayor Melissa Brown wanting to bring in more enforcement to help out what was happening that evening, where people were in front of the ICE facility and making sure that it was going to be safe downtown. So I appreciate that, but he's pushing, making it seem like I'm the only one that had said anything about bringing some enforcement down into our city, because he actually voted to approve of her state emergency that locked everything down and that brought the Spokane County Sheriff downtown to make sure that people were safe.
Yeah, so I think that's loud and clear, that he supports National Guard coming to Spokane.
Well, wait, let's ask. Is that loud and clear?
No, it isn't.
What is it, then?
Well, it's, if the National Guard comes to Spokane, there's, again, we have very limited authority when it comes to a city council. We are not dictators, we're not tyrants, we're not doing anything. We're literally making resolutions and ordinances. So there's not really an issue of whether we allow it or not. It's, we just can't do anything. Federal authority supersedes local authority, and that's what he should know, being a Ivy League person.
But would you say, please don't come? I mean, some cities like Chicago have said, don't come, please. Would you, or would you be, it's up to you?
I would say it's up to you.
Okay, all right.
I would say, please don't come.
Okay.
I think it's critically important that we have local officials who are standing up to federal oversight and overreach and are protecting our citizens. This has been an issue that has broad bipartisan support. And it's concerning, because in two previous forums, he said, yes, he would support Trump sending in the National Guard. Now he's, I've seen messages that he's communicated to people that says, no, actually, I'm not for it. So I don't know if people really can trust where you stand on these...
What, specific messages?
That you've talked to people that said, I don't actually support the Trump.
No, we need specific examples.
All right. I mean, I'm just saying, I've seen these messages. But I think, back to the issue, he doesn't believe that the national politics and national issues are impacting us locally. And I know I talked to folks who've lost jobs because of it. We talk, our apprenticeship programs, our construction is not happening, because federal funding is getting pulled away and people are losing their jobs. This week, SNAP recipients and WIC recipients, those are people on food stamps that are living day to day off of these funds, who are going to go hungry next week. And so what I'm working with is, what protections can we do for folks here locally, while the federal government is overreaching and causing people to lose their healthcare? I've talked to people that said, that my mom's insurance is going to go up $1,000 a month because of the Republicans in Congress refusing to give subsidies for healthcare. She's going to lose her insurance. She's going to get disease, she's not going to be able to treat her chronic diseases, and she's probably going to die. That's real impact on our streets right here. And everything's going to get worse. And so we need local officials who are going to stand up for our values, who are going to say, please don't come here. Not just please, hell no, we don't want you in Spokane. Right? That is our values here in Spokane, and we're going to fight for our residents here so that they don't go starving, they don't lose their healthcare. These are the impacts they're having every day on our lives.
We started a little late, so one more question here. We did have a 7-0 vote this week. I think that the bottom, my observation on this issue is that everyone's main goal is the same. So I guess I want to know if you think we are headed now in a different direction, and what you foresee as far as being able to work together with, let's say, if you get elected, other, more liberals on the council, and if you get reelected to work with the conservatives and the county commission, for instance. We'll start with you.
Yes, no, I agree. We need to work together and make sure that our city is going to be vibrant, a safe city that people can enjoy, as well as making sure that we are addressing these problems in the right manner. So I would definitely work across the aisle. I've already talked with many people when I'm locking on the doors that are already ideologically different than me, and they support everything that I'm doing. That is the one thing that makes me feel really good about going out on these doors and meeting these people face to face, is that we can actually effectively have good change by coming to a common ground, having an open dialogue. And that's what I promise to everyone here, is that I'm going to talk to you. We may have difference of opinion, but I'm going to listen to you. I'm going to make sure your voice is heard, and that's what is missing and lacking right now. We are having no voice up on the city council right now, with a person, and my opponent is just doing what he wants to, his own personal agenda. We need to bring the voice of the people back up to the dais and make sure that they are being listened to, because they are not being listened to right now. Everything is being done because it's a political season, it's an election, and that's why we need to make sure that we are actually talking, not only just in very fortuitous times, but just all the time. And that's what I'm going to do, is I'm going to make sure I'm talking with people who are ideologically different than me, because it doesn't matter what you're thinking. I'm going to sit down and talk with you, because I am going to represent my district and I'm going to represent everyone, because in Spokane, the motto is, we all belong.
Yep, I know that's the motto, that we all belong, because I voted for it and passed it. I have a track record of delivering results and working in a bipartisan manner, to deliver results and listen to our constituents, and get policies passed that are going to move forward. My opponent, this whole race, this entire race, has been fighting for and arguing that we need to reinstate Proposition 1. Today, he said, hey, Zach, I like the policy you passed. Great job. Keep moving forward with it. Because I champion the issues that I hear from constituents every day. I work with people across the aisle to get results for residents and community members. And that's what I'm going to keep doing. And so I'm glad that you're willing to accept the ideas that I've been championing. I get the frustrations. I hear the frustrations. I experience the frustrations. But I want to move... But I want to move us forward instead of just holding on to the past and holding on to grudges of things that aren't working and saying like, bring back this thing, this Proposition One. Like, it failed. I tried to bring it back. It failed. And I got to work, rolled up my sleeves to deliver results and solutions instead of just holding on to the past. I don't want to move us back as a community. I want to move us forward. And I'm gonna keep doing that. And, uh, I have a, a, a track record of doing that.
All right. Well, thank you very much for, uh, coming here today. Thank you, Zach. Thank you, Christopher. And remember to vote November fourth. Uh, drop them in your, uh, the ballot box, not in the mailbox. And, uh, check your spokesman review, spokesman.com for comprehensive election coverage. If it is an election in Spokane County, you can read about it in our election section online. Thank you very much.